Twenty-eighth meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to an end. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please stand and identify yourselves by name and address. Seeing none, Counselor Schultz, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Sorella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor De Natale.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hesinga.
Here.
Counselor Walsh.
Here remotely.
Thank you very much. Public forum. The public has been advised to contact the Clerk’s office by noon today regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. We did receive one, but I believe that individual is in attendance this evening. All right. Anyone who is in attendance may approach the podium in an orderly fashion and speak for no more than two minutes on any item on the agenda. I am going to note that because there are a very large number of people here, if this goes past about 7:30, I may have to cut it off at some point so that we can move on with the agenda, but I will endeavor to make sure everyone gets an ample opportunity to speak. Whoever would like to go first is free to approach.
Janet Yost, Two Brigham Park, Fitchburg. I’m speaking on behalf of naming this beautiful building for my friend Dave Clark. My connection to Dave Clark and family began in September 2002 when my daughter Emily met Kim Clark at Museum Partnership School. I share all the sentiments and accolades previous speakers and email writers expressed about Dave and his dedication to our city. It is not lost on me that this legislative building, Dave’s vision, is struggling to respond positively to Marcus De Natale’s proposal. You have a rare opportunity before you to make a lasting contribution to our city. I understand well Dave’s commitment to the process of public service. As a kindergarten public school teacher in a nearby town, I too did my part, contributing to the whole of the process of educating children. Such was Dave’s mission, to improve the lives, the quality of schools, the quality of all of the opportunities here in our fair city. It was with great hope that I hoped my efforts mattered, same for my friend Dave. He did it because it was his passion. In naming this building for Dave, you send a powerful message. The good, humble servant is honored for their work. Please name this beautiful building for my friend Dave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Clark, and I’m Dave’s youngest daughter. I just wanted to say that this should be an easy decision, and the fact that it hasn’t has been a real shame, especially after all my dad did in his lifetime in Fitchburg. No one has been able to give any reason why David Clark is not deserving of this honor, only that they think this building shouldn’t be named after anyone. But why? Things are named after people all the time. Why are we starting now? There’s no law or rule that has come into place, so why now? What did my dad do to deserve that? I don’t think anyone could answer that question. The petition at hand is not about should we or should we not name the building. The question is about Dave Clark, and if he is deserving of being memorialized on this building, the answer is yes. We’ve established many times the reasons why: his morality, the integrity of his character, his work, his reach, his legislative work, and advocacy in the city, and his connection to this building that is untouched by anyone else. A no vote is saying that he is not deserving. It’s not about having another option or not giving it a name. It’s about David Clark, and if he and his character, his years of work and dedication were deserving. The petition is about his name, not a name. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Mitchell, and I’m David Clark’s eldest daughter. And I would like to express my support for this petition to name the new legislative building after my father. His many years of service and countless contributions to the city clearly make him deserving of this honor. The sentiment has been echoed over and over. It is common practice to name buildings after people. I see no reason, and have yet to hear one, as to why we should stop that practice now. My father had Fitchburg running through his veins. He never loved any place more than his hometown. I can think of no better fitting tribute than to have his name right on Main Street in the heart of the city on a building that he helped bring into existence. My father was a humble man. What he would not want is for this matter to become a spectacle. I keep hearing that word in his voice over and over. I ask that you make this an easy and painless decision, as it should be. I ask that you please support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Courtney Clark. I live at 131 Constitution Drive in Fitchburg, and I am David Clark’s middle daughter. I am here to voice my support of petition 046-21, to name the new legislative building in honor of David Clark. After last week’s Legislative Affairs Committee meeting, I sat outside crying in a moment of frustration. Counselor Hughes was kind enough to approach me, help me to my feet, and comfort me by asking, “What would your dad say?” I’ve thought about that question a lot in the time since that meeting. What would my dad say? What would he do? What would Dave do? Well, I know for certain that my dad would continue to fight for what he believes in, which is why I’m here tonight. I believe wholeheartedly that my father deserves this honor. No ifs, ands, or buts, without any stipulations, yes, this particular honor, and any other honor that is suggested henceforth. He deserves it all. I also sincerely believe that if the situation were reversed, my father would be the first to vote in favor of honoring any one of you, because he believed in the people around him. He believed in Fitchburg. He valued the contributions of his fellow counselors and constituents alike, and he recognized the importance of honest work and integrity. That’s the kind of counselor he was, and the kind of person he was. I’d like to extend my gratitude once more to Counselor Marcus De Natale for recognizing my father’s commitment to this city and putting this petition forth. I know that in doing so, he did not anticipate that it would become a point of contention. Neither did we. That being said, writing this statement came as a huge challenge for me. What else could I possibly say that hasn’t been said about this remarkable man? What else could we do to prove that he deserves this recognition? There’s not much I can say or do. I can only ask that you reflect on my father’s 40 years of dedication to this city, and let that speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I’m Sherri Clark, 131 Constitution Drive, and I’m going to go over a few seconds. I couldn’t get it down any shorter. Dave was the ultimate fan of our city and one of the most honorable men I’ve ever known, and never did anything for personal recognition. For 40 years, he served our city by announcing and promoting school by sports, broadcasting call-in programming, showcasing local athletes. He coached Little League and street hockey. He continued announcing play-by-play for area football, basketball, and hockey while volunteering at FATV. Dave was someone you could rely on, a man of his word. He felt strongly about helping our city and its residents. While serving on the school committee, he was instrumental in the new FHS building. As a member of the city council, he worked tirelessly during the ice storm that brought Fitchburg to a stop. He maintained excellent communication with our police, fire, and emergency services, and our governing officials. He served on the Board of Directors at FATV and the Crocker Field Restoration Committee, believing that the services and causes they promoted and provided were an integral part in the success of Fitchburg Revitalization. We have heard that he was well-liked and admired, and his character was beyond reproach. It has been said that the problem lays in whether a building should be named after one person. I would like to point out that there are many namings and dedications throughout Fitchburg. I cross the Mayor Hedley Bray Bridge nearly every day. We have Arthur D. Tomassal Memorial Bridge, the Honorable Andre Jalinas Courthouse, Longs Joe School, Wallace Civic Center with the Gates, and Landry Arenas, Anson Park, Dick Charlton Memorial Field, Peter Nicodus Field, Doug Grutchfield Fieldhouse, Alario Softball Field, Crocker Field, and Fitchburg itself. They were politicians, athletes, founding fathers, and generous philanthropists, well deserving of the honor and our admiration. Counselor Boishman said that it would be an injustice to name the building after David Clark. I find that statement to be an insult to my husband’s character and memory. It should be noted that it was Dave’s consistent legislative actions and deciding vote that were directly responsible for this building coming to fruition. His decades of public service warrant his recognition in this manner. I respectfully request that you support Counselor De Natale’s petition and vote in favor of it. Thank you, Marcus. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Tebow. We’re on Lawrence Street in Fitchburg. I’m here to express my support for naming the new legislative building, the David Clark Legislative Building. David Clark loved Fitchburg, and he dedicated so much of his life to the city, from his work on the city council, both warden at large, to the school committee, to his long career at Fitchburg State University, to FATV, to WEIM Radio, to the countless hours of volunteerism and everything in between. I feel his memory should be honored by the city in this way. In a lot of ways, it’s the least the city could do for his 40-plus years of service. If I had it my way, we’d name the new city hall after him. We would name Fitchburg Clarkburg, but I’m not in charge. I remember when I first met Dave, I was nervous because he was like meeting a local celebrity. He was the voice of so many sporting events I watched, especially the Thanksgiving game. And, you know, I was familiar with his work around the city, and I knew he was in the Guinness Book of World Records, but, you know, most of all, I just knew he was a good person. You know, I took great pride in whenever anybody ever said, “Oh, you know Dave Clark, too?” And I said, “Yeah, I know Dave Clark. He’s such a great guy.” And they saw it. Everybody knew he was such a great guy, and everybody was proud to know him. Dave Clark was exactly that, a great guy, the most genuine, sweet, funny, patient, caring, selfless person. How much personal time did this man give up? How much of his own fleeting time did this man give up for the city? To attend meetings, to speak with concerned constituents, to volunteer? Hell, he was in all of our homes every Thanksgiving morning. He wasn’t even with his family. He sacrificed all that time for the city he loved, and he did it with a smile on his Honestly, this should be a unanimous decision, and it’s not easy for anyone to come up here, especially the family who’s had to come up here twice, who has been through so much, and it’s obviously important to them and to a lot of people, and it should be important to you, because I know that you work side by side with them. What would Dave Clark do? He would have done the right thing, and he would have voted for any one of you in a second. I don’t even think there would have been a second meeting. I just hope he’d do the right thing, too.
Thank you.
Clayton Raymond, 559 Shea Street. I don’t have a prepared speech, but Dave was a friend of mine, and I’m in favor of naming this building after David Clark. Maybe just a short story. A few years back, Dave and I and others were having a beer, and we’d talk about sports, and he wouldn’t talk about the Celtics and the Patriots. He would talk about Fitchburg High School. He knew every player I’ve played with back in 1979 and 1980, and for players from that point on, and he just loved the city, and I just want to express my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon McCloskey, 20 Hobson Street, Fitchburg. I’m a lifetime resident of Fitchburg. My husband, Steve McCloskey, and myself have known Dave and Sherri Clark and their family for over 30 years. In that time, we have found Dave to be a hard-working, public servant for the people and city of Fitchburg. In the few times we ever had an issue, we would ask Dave, and he would immediately take care of it or tell us who to contact if he couldn’t do it himself. I saw him selflessly ringing the Salvation Army bell one time in front of Kmart. I know he spent many hours at Crocker Field working on the renovation there. That’s how he was. He quietly stepped in and did what was needed to help. He never would ask for this recognition, which makes him even more deserving of it. Dave never bad-mouthed the city like some people do, but worked tirelessly to make it a better place to live. He loved the city of Fitchburg and the people in it. In conclusion, Dave’s vote was the final and deciding vote to pass the vote for the remodeling of City Hall. I will hope that you will give the vote now to honor him and name this great building after Dave Clark. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Flynn, 87 Nasher Street. As many of you know, I was Dave’s broadcast partner for over 40 years, so I have enough stories, so we could go for about two hours if you want to go that far. But more importantly, he was a great friend, and tonight we are asking you to support the petition to name this building after him. You have the opportunity tonight to honor and remember a humble public servant of the city of Fitchburg. You’ve heard all Dave’s qualifications: lifelong Fitchburg resident, great husband and father, served on the city council, council at large, and on the school committee, volunteered for the Board of Directors at FATV, and the Crocker Field Restoration Committee, promoted the student athletes of Fitchburg through his entire longtime broadcasting career, and he coached, we both coached Little League and street hockey together here in Fitchburg. Many times, these honors are given to people who donate large sums of money. Dave had none. Or where people have powerful positions in their organization to get the building named after them. Well, Dave was neither of those, but he was a very humble person and loved to help the people and serve the city of Fitchburg. Tonight, you have the chance to honor and remember one of the most public servants and one of the really good guys of Fitchburg. Please vote yes on his petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kevin Sarr, 401 Highland Ave. I can’t top anything that you guys said about Dave. So I’m just going to share two quick stories. First time I ever spoke with Dave was on the phone when I called up WEIM, him and Mike, and wanted to answer a trivia question for Red Sox tickets. And the question was, “Who was the last Red Sox player hit for the cycle?” At the time, it was Rich Gedman. No one could believe the answer. Years later, I was sworn into the city council, and in January of ’08, after Counselor De Natale and myself were sworn in, Dave came up to me right afterwards, and the first thing he said to me was, “Now you’re going to learn,” that, of course, many of you know, ward counselors do all the work. And he was right, well, at least in my own humble opinion, but Dave was the type of person that taught me, as a ward counselor, what it took and how much effort you needed to put in to do a good job. And, you know, four years later, I stepped away because I wasn’t willing to give up family time to do that job, and Dave was the first person to call and congratulate me when he found out I was stepping away. He was just honest-to-God Mr. Fitchburg. I can’t top anything else that was said, but if you guys decide to accept the Appointments Committee’s recommendation of leave to withdraw, if you decide to do that, and I speak wholeheartedly, I hope you reject it, but think of other options. I haven’t been in this building until tonight. Dave Clark Council Chambers isn’t too bad either, so I would hope that you possibly would consider other options if you decide to reject this, but, like was said before, can’t think of a better public servant to name a municipal building after. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Clark. I’m David’s younger brother, and I wasn’t really planning on saying anything, but because I talked to people afterwards, after the meeting last time, and I found it very, very meaningful, and again, I thank you so much for the kind words you said about my brother. But as Sharon was saying, you know, she saw Dave out there ringing a Salvation Army bell. I think Dave should have been called Waldo. Where’s Waldo? Where wasn’t he in the city? You know, he was at Fitchburg State. He was a crosswalk guard for a while. Everybody must have went around the corner and said, “What’s this guy doing here? You know, he’s at the games, he’s, you know, coaching, he’s here with you guys, and you know what kind of a fighter he was. You know what he stood for, and you all went to battle with him. And you know what, his character is unreproached. There’s no question about it, and I got that strongly from everybody up there. But you know what he’s like, and you know how much Fitchburg meant to him, and I think it would be right to name a structure like this after my brother. Not for a favor, because he was a good guy, but for what he did and his dedication to the city. I don’t think anybody I bumped into recently, they would say, “Oh, I didn’t know your brother did this. Oh, I didn’t know your brother did that. I didn’t know my brother did this. I didn’t know my brother did that.” You know, because he was really never home that much, you know, especially when he got married, and, you know, when he’s, you know, he’s just done a great job of being a father, being a husband, being a brother, and I think a tremendous job of working for the city. So I hope that you consider naming this building after him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vince Clark. I am one of Dave Clark’s nephews. I didn’t really have anything to prepare for this, but I just, I know how much the town meant to him. You know, we had so many good times. He had such a great sense of humor. I remember always visiting the family, and he was, you know, nothing but welcoming, and he certainly was a, it was a big loss for us, and I think any recognition is great, but the fact that he is being considered honored to be this building named after him is, I think, well-deserved, and I just, I appreciate the consideration, and I know he’s played such a big role in everyone’s lives here, and this, you know, this city was everything to him. So, you know, just wanted to thank you for the consideration and hope you guys consider that, and how much he’s meant to us and hopefully the town as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will conclude public comment. We will now hear a report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier today, and we took on an appointment of numerous poll workers for the period of September 1st, 2021, through August 21st, 2022, all of which was voted unanimously.
Thank you. For the council. I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Appointments Committee. If there is no objection, we’ll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it passes. We will now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this time, all records appear to be in order. Thank you.
Any motion received?
Second.
Motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. If there is no objection, we’ll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it passes. We have communications from His Honor, the mayor. We have a total of six new appointment letters. Officer Frederick C. Lake as a special police officer for the city of Fitchburg, and five permanent full-time firefighters, Mr. Robert P. Barrett, Mr. Lorenzo Calderon, Mr. Noah P. Ensley, Mr. Brian P. Nielsen, and Mr. David J. Votela. Those are all referred to the Appointments Committee, which will have a special meeting next week on the 27th. There is also one, no, I’m sorry, three reappointments, all to the Water, Wastewater Commission. Michael McLaughlin, term to expire January 1st, 2025. George Saner, term to expire April 1st, 2025. And Richard Healy, term to expire July 15th, 2025. We have a further communication from Mr. Skrowski, which is addressed later in the agenda, so for the time being, if there is no objection, we will waive any reading. Seeing no objection. We now have a report from the City Property Committee, which met earlier tonight and voted on three items. 10621, Robert M. Jokel, Superintendent of Schools, to declare 253 Laurel Street as excess surplus property. That passed unanimously. Robert M. Jokel, Superintendent of Schools, to declare 44 Winusnock Road as excess surplus property. That was, there was a 3 to 2 vote to retain that property. And 10821, Megan P. Donahue, Executive Director of the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority, to authorize the mayor to sign and deliver to the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority the entire release of easement as outlined in the enclosed petition. That passed unanimously. Before anyone makes a motion on this, I would like to note on 10721 that the comments made by the persons voting in favor were generally of the nature that we can revisit this at any time and opt to declare it surplus property at any time in the future. In order to facilitate that, I would request that 10721, that we get a motion to amend from a vote to expressly retain the property to a vote to either hold or give leave to withdraw to the underlying petition, because if we vote on it expressly to retain, there’s a time lapse that has to pass before we can take up any contrary vote.
I move to amend 10721 to hold that petition.
Second. I have a motion and second to amend 107, to amend the report of the Committee on 10721 from a recommendation to retain the property to a recommendation to hold the petition. Speaking on the motion to amend, Counselor De Natale?
I’m sorry, I’m not to amend.
Okay.
I’ll speak after that.
On the motion to amend, any comment? Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, the reason why I voted to retain it for the time being is I’d like to put it on hold so that we can have the facilities director come in, because that’s what Counselors Boishman and Squallia had questions about. So as soon as we can get the facilities director in to talk about that, I think, you know, we can move forward.
And that is precisely what this will facilitate. Counselor De Natale?
So what I find interesting about that is, who does the facilities director report to?
PPW Commissioner.
So Counselor, can I ask you to hold on just a moment? So Counselor, can I ask you to hold on just a moment, because we're still on the motion to amend?
All right, I'll get there.
We will speak to the underlying motion.
I'd like to also note that someone spoke out of order, and no one, you know, I wasn't asking one of the counselors, I was asking in general. Thank you.
Is there any further comment on the motion to amend? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? None in opposition. Motion to amend passes unanimously. We now have the amended report of the Appointments Committee before the council.
Move to approve the amended City Property Committee report.
Sorry, City Property, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report as amended. Counselor Giannatalli?
It was stated earlier that the committee didn't act on this because they want to hear from the Facilities Manager. The Facilities Manager answers to the Building Commissioner, who also answers to the mayor. The School Committee passed this to give it up, since it's their building. And my understanding from speaking with the Superintendent and the mayor was, the plans for this facility were to put it on the market and sell it to a private developer to get it on the tax rolls, because it is a prime piece of real estate, right across the street from the Dollar Tree, that has had a lot of interest in the past. But in order to actually get that interest going, we need to accept this. But, you know, we have the mayor here this evening, we have the Superintendent. I just, you know, the Facilities Manager, I'd like to know if the Facilities Manager, if the mayor knew that the Facilities Manager did this. Because he's the chair of the School Committee, and everybody invariably reports to him, and he voted to give this up to the city. So I, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to get his opinion on this, just out of curiosity, since last I checked, he runs this city, not the Facilities Manager.
We would need the motion to be withdrawn first.
We're not going to withdraw the motion, have the mayor speak. You've got to be kidding me.
It is entirely at the discretion of the maker of the motion. That is the procedure. And I do not see consent for that. Any further comment on the mo, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I do have a list. Counselor Boishman?
I just want to point out that we all got the, we all got the folders on these bits of property, and numerous, numerous people placed an interest in these, this property. Parks Department, City Clerk, Building Commissioner. I talked to the facilitator, he took me down, but I couldn't get inside. This building, there is no rush to sell this building, none whatsoever. We can use it for many things, and it's developable for us. We don't have enough building to hold stuff and store stuff. We don't have it. So what's the big hurry on it? We already know that we got a gold mine right there. We know we can sell it anytime, at any place, in any hour. So there's no rush to sell it. We ought to look at the building and see what we can use it for, what would be good for us in the future, not just get rid of it. It's a perfect building, I was down there. You can use it for many things. Yes, oh yeah, we're going to use it for storage, we're going to put rubbish out. We can also repair screens. We're sending our screens out to repair, and it costs money. Why not repair them ourselves in the house? It'll be cheaper for us to repair the screens on buildings. Why, why? What's the big hurry? Really, we act like we get no money. You telling me we get no money? In a little while from now, we're going to be voting on $65 million. So you telling me we don't have any money and we need this? Come on. I'm asking, we hold off. I asked them, and they supported me, to hold off on this petition. I think we should hold off and really think about what we're going to do in the future, not today. Let's look at the future. It's a good building, I was down there. Again, I didn't get inside the building. I was not allowed in. And I understand, and I'll point out to you, since you want to know, I was also told there's only one part of the building that's got heat, the other part doesn't have a boiler in it. But that's okay. We're only going to put barrels in there. What's the big deal? We throw away money already, so what's the heck?
Right.
All right. So anyway, I just want to say that. So I personally am not going to vote, I want to hold this piece of property. We can develop this piece of property any way down the line. It's not going to end tomorrow. We only get so much land in the city of Fitchburg, and let's hold on to it, and let's see what we can use it for, what we can do with it, the city of Fitchburg. If you read your package, and I believe we all did, the Parks Department came up with some very good ideas, not just for storage, he had a plan. So what's the big hurry? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
Originally, when this came before us, I had asked City Solicitor Vinnie Poussetteri to entertain the thought about separating the building from the excess acreage. And I would like to hear if we had made progress with that, or where we are even on that, if we choose to keep the parcel of property where the building sits and potentially sell off the excess that wouldn't affect the comings or goings of that building.
Counselor, we would still need the motion withdrawn in order to receive that testimony?
Okay.
Counselor Squallia?
Yes, as Counselor Boishman noted, I just want to note that the Facilities Director that we, you know, approved of hiring recently, gave us an extensive argument in favor of retaining this facility. And I would like to hear from the Facilities Director directly, and I'd like to know the cost of the city to maintain that building and operate it in the way that the Facilities Director suggests. And I feel like without doing that due diligence, that I would be remiss of my duties. So I would like, so I'm in favor of holding this, so that I can learn more about this facility, certainly. And like Counselor Boishman said, I don't understand why we're in a rush to get rid of this building, or, you know, have any hurt feelings about it. They were simply holding this petition for more information. Thank you.
Counselor Giannatalli?
Let me just state for clarity's sake that when it was said that we voted for it, some of us didn't vote for the petition. So, including the person who just spoke. I'm not saying we, I'm not hurt by this. I'm looking at the process. And I'm asking myself, because this council will not allow it, to let the chief executive officer of the city, who everyone reports to, including the Facilities Manager, who is also the chair of the School Committee, who voted to give this building to the city, what he thinks about this. And no one wants to hear his opinion. They want to hear his subordinate's subordinate's opinion. You know, I find it interesting how there are some who are in elected office who are casting dispersions on selling a property to a private individual to generate tax revenue, when in, out of another sentence, they keep saying how we're broke and how we're going down the tubes. It's just the world I live in on this council, I guess. I mean, I just asked for an opinion from the chief executive officer, and no one wants him to speak, which has become a trend lately. So, fine, we'll get an information from the Facilities Manager. I got news for people, this is just reality that I live in. The Facilities Manager can give 15 ways till Sunday why he thinks we should keep this facility. What really matters in the end is what he thinks, his boss. Okay? And if we're not going to accept it, I can guarantee you, that building will fall into a state of disrepair, and then we'll have these same individuals who want that building to stay in Fitchburg's hands, they'll be the first ones to scream bloody murder that it's falling in disrepair. I can see it a mile away. So I'm not saying let's rush. The School Committee doesn't have any use for it. And if, that's how things are going to work here, where departments are going to tell us as an elected body, they want it, but the chief executive doesn't, I have a problem with that. I think it's at least, at the very least, a little informative for us to make a decision to get his opinion, and I'm not saying that because of his last name, which I have to always say too. So if we want to hold this, fine, but I heard some comments earlier about, well, what if we want to keep it? Our people want it, so we're going to forfeit a gold mine of tax revenue and adding jobs because the Parks Department wants it? Is the Parks Department going to keep the building up? No. They can't even fill staff right now because of our illustrious federal government. So I'm sorry, folks, I speak like this, but I just, the same people who are going to say this are the same ones who are the first to say, "We are a dying city. And we can't maintain our buildings, but we want to keep another one." But again, at the very least, I don't understand the hesitation to pull the motion and have the mayor weigh in on this, and then if you want to hold it still, fine. But I don't know what, what is everyone afraid of to let him address this? I don't understand it. Thank you.
Counselor Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also in favor of, why do we need to hold on to this building? Because if we hold on to the building, it's just going to fall into disrepair, or if another department take on this responsibility, they're going to have to come back to us for money to maintain it. That's my concern, you know? You just can't have a building there and have, it's just sitting there, because then people who don't have respect for property is going to break the windows, they're going to do all this, these kind of things, and they were going to end up with the problem, you know? Anyway, so I don't understand why all these opinions, if we have an opportunity to sell it and get it on a tax roll, then to keep it, it becomes a burden, seems like a no-brainer to me. You know what I mean? Just why hold on to something if we know, even if another department took it over, they still got to come to us for approval to maintain it? They get oil, there is upkeep, is that a part of the budget? That's not in the budget right now to do that. So they got to come to us, and the mayor has asked, you know, asked for more money to maintain this facility. So why do we, why do we need to keep it? We know what it looks like, been around for a dozen years. We know it's, you know, we're not standing outside like, "Oh, what's we going to do with it?" That doesn't make any sense. We're wasting people's time. You know, let's, if we can get money off of it, let's get money. You know? We're going to turn it into another school? No. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Giannatalli. If we have the mayor here that can speak, and the Facility Director isn't here, we should allow the mayor to speak on this subject. If, it's unfortunate he wasn't here at the, at the City Property Meeting that we had, Committee Meeting that we had earlier, because if he had, I probably wouldn't have voted to retain it temporarily. I would have voted to probably declare it as excess. Is there some way, you're an expert on Robert's Rules of Law, is there some way I can withdraw my vote, my committee vote, and allow the mayor to speak tonight? I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous that he's not able to speak, because as Counselor Giannatalli said, he is the Facility Director's boss, and we should hear from him. Thank you.
Counselor Fleming?
What motion has to be made in order to withdraw this hold?
There is no way to withdraw a motion by motion, but what can be done is to vote against the motion, and if it fails, then there will be no motion on the table, outside individuals will be able to speak, and the individual items that the committee reported on will then be before the council.
So the mayor will then in turn be able to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay.
And speaking for myself, that is the way I will be voting as well, both because I was opposed to holding this initially, but also because I do believe that we need the input of the mayor and of the city solicitor, both of which have been requested by counselors, before we can make this decision in an informed fashion. That said, I do have Counselor Boishman waiting to speak for the second time.
I just want to say, I understand where Counselor Giannatalli talks about, because I'm just that guy that finds fault with the city of Fitchburg, and I'm not going to deny that. But I also want to point out to everybody that we're going to put in our hands in the city of Fitchburg, 253 Laurel Street. So if you're all worried about the money, why don't we take the proceeds from this piece of property that we're going to sell down the road and put it towards that piece of property? Well, nobody thought about that, but if you say that, we can't do that, it's going to go in the general fund, because I got tech projects I want to get done. All I'm saying, and in regards to the counselor on my right, I want to tell him something, if we let the building go in disarray, that's because we let it go into disarray. We let it go into disarray, because I'll give you a prime example. I walk around Forest Hill Cemetery, the roof is falling apart and we just fixed it. And whose fault is that? You can see the thing flapping in the wind.
Counselor, Counselor, we're not on Forest Hill Cemetery.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying. So, but all I'm saying to you is this, this is an ideal piece of property, hold on to it. We got an opportunity. We're not just using it for storage, people want to use it. They're going to use it. And we can maintain it, and we can handle it. We can handle it, we can do it. We just don't focus and say we can't. We hired a building facilitator that I voted against for $100,000 a year. If he thinks we can afford to do it, and he thinks we can fix it up, what's wrong with that? You guys, you guys swore by him, he was going to be Mr. Wonderful, and it wasn't going to be a Christmas list. Well, he made a suggestion. I went by what I read on the, on the, the package that they gave us, that's what they gave us the package for, to make sound decisions on what we plan on doing. And the package says in there, four groups of people would like to hold that building. And I repeat my statement, we can put the building, just like my house, I can put my house up for sale anytime I want to. It doesn't have to be today. So why not hold it? Because once you let it go, it's gone for good, and you're not going to get it back. So that's how I feel.
Counselor Kuchar? Just to go off with what Counselor Boishman said, you can hold off, you can hold off, you can hold off, but what happens next year when the housing market tanks and it's not worth what it's valued at right now? That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Fleming for the second time?
No need to speak. Counselor Kuchar just made my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hughes?
Why are we wasting the city's time? Why are we wasting everyone's time? They don't want the building. The building has value. Last time I heard, if something has value, if it's equity, then that's cash. So what if we want to use it on a, on a project that's going to make the city better? If you hold on to it, it's going to cost you money. My colleague made an analogy, says, "If I want a house, if I have a house, I can sell it anytime I want to." Well, that's all in well and good if you live in the house. That means you can maintain it. But no one is living in, no one is occupying the building. So that comparison, you know, it doesn't work. Doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz for the second time?
Thank you, Counselor Zarela. I think Superintendent Jokel made a point at the City Property Committee Meeting earlier about the fact that if we do sell the property, the building, it will go back to the School Capital Improvement Fund. Would you like to speak to that, Superintendent Jokel?
We do still have the motion on the table.
Oh, we do have it.
Or before the council, rather. But that is correct, that is what was discussed.
Yes, okay.
If there are no further comments on the motion, I have a motion and second to approve the report of the committee in its entirety. A no vote will put the individual items before this council. All in favor of approving the committee report?
Aye.
I have three in favor. All in opposition. Counselor Walsh, are you in favor or in opposition?
I believe I'm in opposition.
Thank you. That is, my math is crap, that is eight to three. The motion, the motion fails, the matters are now individually before the council.
Move to approve 10621.
10821.
Motion to accept 106 and 10821. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 106 and 10821. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. 10721 is now before the council.
Motion to accept 10721 to declare it as surplus excess property.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 10721. Counselor Giannatalli?
Okay, so where I was going with what I said earlier about the Facilities Manager, who I did vote for, and I did have a lot of good things to say about the position, not the person. I, I want someone, it's a hypothetical, name me an instance where a department head acts in... in opposition to the chief executive officer they report to. So if community development director Skawarski does something, and the mayor's against it, would he come before us and do it? No. I'm not trying to name names. I'm saying department heads are not mouthpieces for the mayor, but there is a chain of command. You would like to think that the department heads work with the mayor to get this stuff out there. I'm not saying that the facilities manager didn't do that. What I'm saying is that he's not here tonight, but he provided a written statement. What makes me pause about this is the mayor of the city, who is chair of the school committee, who voted to declare it excess property to the city. He is here, and that's why, actually, I can't ask him, right? Because I made the motion, right?
Right.
So can I withdraw my motion, please?
We would now need unanimous consent for the motion to be withdrawn.
Boy. You're walking on thin ice. I'm not going to get that, am I?
I can ask.
So, you know, I know this has taken a while already. All I'm sitting here saying to myself is, what is the big deal if the mayor speaks about this? I'm not going to get a unanimous consent to withdraw because they don't want him to talk. Why? That's my whole point here. Forget the facilities director, forget your opinion on accepting it or not. Can we please have the solicitor and the mayor speak on this? Is that too much to ask?
For the purpose of the record, I will ask if there is unanimous consent to allow Counselor De Natale to withdraw his motion.
No.
All right, there is objection from Counselor Squal.
Gee, I'm shocked. So I am going to vote to accept this property because the school committee has no use for it, and I have had to hear for 14 years how we're terrible landlords. When I voted for the position of facilities director, I did not have the caveat when I voted for that position, that I was going to do everything the facilities director says. Last I checked, I have voted against a lot of department head recommendations in my 14-year career, and yet the city still stands. So I read his letter, I take it under advisement, but then I look at the fact that I am routinely pounded into submission of how we don't take care of our buildings in this city. And the sale of this property, which is lucrative, would go into the school budget for capital improvements in our school buildings, which I'm told all the time, our school buildings aren't very well maintained. That's what everyone tells me, including people on this dais. So I don't want this property. I don't care what the department heads want to do with it. I want someone to buy this, develop it, get it on the tax rolls, so we don't have to have the residents pick up the $15,000 or $20,000 a year tax bill because we decided to keep it, and give it to the school department to renovate additional needs in their facilities. So I'm just going to say it. This is my opinion. I don't care what the mayor has to say, the solicitor, or the facility. I disagree with the facilities director, and since no one's going to let the mayor or the solicitor talk, which is unbelievable, I'm voting to accept this as surplus property, get it on the tax rolls, and give the money to the schools where it's needed. Thank you. Counselor Green.
Is there anyone here tonight that's allowed to speak on what the process is on, or the timeline on what we're looking at as far as getting Laurel Street available for sale, Wanusenok Road available for sale? What's the plan? Because what I don't want to do is sit here in September, or October, or November, or December, not having a plan. Like, are we ready to start listing these properties tomorrow as they're available, it's a clean site, or how many months of remediation, or what needs to be done to get these property listed? If there's anybody that can speak on that or not?
I would also like an answer to that, but again, it would require that the motion be permitted to be withdrawn.
Can I make a motion to withdraw?
Unfortunately, no. That's not the way it works.
I think we need answers, and we're not getting.
I suppose, I'm trying to think if there is a procedural way to do this. Counselor Green, you do still have the floor.
Thank you. If it gets held, what does that mean? Is that like, do we take it again with a special meeting next week? Do we hear it in August? Do we bump it out until September? Can we, do we have any of those answers available on what holding means?
I can answer that. If we were to hold it, it would not be heard again until at least September, because we do not have a special meeting of the city property committee next week, and there are no further meetings after that until September.
Would it, hypothetically, would it be reasonable to think that that would give us enough time so that there's a plan in place if we decide, when we decide to act on these properties, what direction we're going to take with it?
I mean, I can't say if it would be enough time. Again, that's a question that I would normally refer to a subject matter expert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the building, the facilities director's report, because he's doing his job. He's managing our facilities in the city, and there are departments that need space, so he's looking at available opportunities. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. He did his job. It's our job in the council, and also the mayor's job in the executive office, to decide, you know, is this the best course of action? And I think in order to use this building, it would take a substantial investment of money to make it habitable, to make the building structurally sound, to make it usable for these uses. I don't know if the city's in position to make that investment at this time or the near future. I think there's also an opportunity cost, that this is a rather large property. It's about seven and a half acres, portion usable, but a good portion usable on a prominent corner in the city that would support significant commercial development or multifamily development. There is an opportunity cost that we would not have the proceeds of the sale of this property, or also the tax returns, or the tax payments on this property if it were privately developed. I think it'd be better used to develop elsewhere in the city that's not this type of location to meet our needs. I think it is warranted to declare it excess and to go through an RFP process or some other mechanism to sell it to a developer and have it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Boishman, I do just want to reiterate one point that was made during the city property committee, which is that this declaration of surplus property does not trigger any irreversible consequences. It doesn't actually take the property out of city control. It gives council authorization to begin the process of looking for a buyer. If down the road during that process, we were to come to the conclusion as a city or as a council that it ought to be retained, that there is a use that the city would have for it that has not heretofore been anticipated, there would be nothing stopping us from doing that at that time. That said, Counselor Boishman.
I just want to say, I took a ride today with the facilitator, and he never once said to me, we should keep the building. I want to make that very clear. I asked him all kinds of questions, and he said, he said to me, you're making some good points here, and we should really think about this building before we just go off the map with it and give it away. And I said, I agree. I said, the thing is, as for repairs, it needs some repairs, I'm not going to dispute that. Needs paint. Paint's cheap. And if the city tells me they can't afford paint, then we can't afford $65 million. So I just want to tell you that. So all I'm saying to you is that we don't have, again, I'll repeat my statement, and I know I'm repeating, we don't have to get rid of this building today. There's nothing in the books, and it's going to take time anyway, because it's going to go to the city clerk, and she's got paperwork to do, and all that stuff by the time, and she's got to go to the state and all that, and not the clerk, the treasurer, sorry, and paperwork to do and all that stuff. So it's going to take time. But I'm asking the council to use our heads for once and not give away a valuable piece of land that we can benefit from. Not right now, because, oh, we're going to take the money and spend it on something God knows what.
Schools.
And we can use this, and we can get the money in time. In regards, in regards to the statement that was given to me, when the housing market crashes, just remember that, what the statement was said, because we got a $65 million project in front of us tonight, and I'm going to mention that $65 million, when the housing market falls, what's going to happen then? So there, thank you.
I will just reiterate also that we do actually know where the money is going. It's going back to the school department's budget, presumably for capital improvements.
Presumably, presumably.
Why don't we think about allowing the motion to be withdrawn? Just consider it, so we can get the answers that we need. Otherwise, we're just going to keep going back and forth. And I was told earlier that the Milwaukee Bucks are playing tonight in the NBA Finals. I'm not going to tell you who told me that. So I'd like to, you know, our colleagues on the council to consider that and allow Counselor De Natale to withdraw his motion, so we can get the questions from the mayor to get the answers that we need to get, so we can make a decision. Instead of, because if we're not going to get the answers, then we're just going to keep going back and forth. Otherwise, let's call for a vote.
Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm on the city property committee, and we met, and we were told that the building doesn't even have a heating system at this point. It's got a little gas heater that's heating a couple of rooms. It's in disrepair. I was in favor of holding it temporarily just to get answers, but now we can't even, we have someone that can give us the, a couple of people that can give us the answers, and you won't allow them to speak. So if that's going to be the case, I will reverse my vote of earlier of temporarily holding it, and I will vote to declare it excess property, if that's the way it's got to be. Thank you.
Counselor De Natale. I'll tell you, after tonight's meeting, which has been very informative, I am going to put forward next week a petition to change this rule. Okay? Because this is ridiculous. If 10 of us want to do it, but one doesn't, we can't do it. As Counselor Hughes said, we're going back and forth on speculation and thinking, and we're not letting the chief executive officer and the city solicitor speak. They're here. I don't understand why, I don't understand why, well, I have an idea, but it's just unbelievable to me that we're all talking about what could be, and, okay, let's say we hold it, and we wait for the facilities director to come forward. I can guarantee that the mayor and the solicitor will be right next to him when he comes forward. And I'm not, you know, Counselor Van Hazinga, to his credit, you know, sometimes I go home and my wife says to me, why can't you talk more like him? Because he, he has a way of saying it that I could only dream of, but it's just not in my DNA. Where he said correctly, I am not, I am not attacking the facilities manager. I am not saying he's not doing his job. My point earlier was, he's not here, but his boss's boss is, who happened to already vote in public record to take the, the mayor voted to take the building. And we're not going to let Mr. Pousatary and Mayor De Natale address this tonight. We're going to hold this potentially for six or seven weeks, for reasons I know, but I'm not going to say publicly because it's against the rules. And so I'm with Counselor Schultz. I think every one of us should vote to accept this as surplus tonight in protest, not because it's the wrong thing to do, it's the right thing to do, but this is ridiculous, that we can't get an answer out of these two, because one of us refuses to withdraw the motion. So I think, well, Counselor Boishman's not, Counselor Squal, I think there should be a nine to two vote to accept and end it right there. Because if that's how we're going to play this game, then just take it. Because for any constituent who calls me tomorrow and says, you sounded very irritated last night, which I get all the time, I'm going to correctly remind them that we could have gotten our answers addressed tonight, and someone refused to have us get those answers, so we accepted it because, and I'm accepting it, because I don't want another facility. The last thing we need is another facility, just like the last thing we need is another park. Thank you.
Thank you, and feel free to contact me tomorrow about that rule. Anyone else to speak on this motion? I have a motion and second to approve 10721, accepting 44 Wanusenok Road as surplus property. All in favor?
Aye.
Was that Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Okay. In opposition? Three in opposition. Motion passes eight to three. Next up, we have a report of the finance committee. Counselor De Natale.
Finance met on July 13th and accepted the loan order unanimously, 14321 for $65 million, $50,000 for the purpose of paying costs of MSBA core project to construct a new Cracker Elementary School with a grade configuration of one to five, located at 200 Bigelow Road, Pittsburgh, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The project is outlined in the enclosed order. That was, again, unanimously recommended to the full council by the committee.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and second to accept. Counselor Boishman.
Under motion, I just want to say that, I'm going to repeat my statement as I said Tuesday night, I believe that the cost of this school is outrageous. $65 million for grades one to five, when a kid in the first, second, or third grade doesn't really care how he goes to school and what it looks like, because he's more concerned about playing with Johnny and James and that.
Excuse me, we do need, Counselor Boishman does have the floor.
And the other thing I wanted to point out to everybody, that we built Pittsburgh High School for a cost of $38 million. Right down the street, I was told, our competition built their school for under $30 million, for under $30 million, just as big as we're going to build. So we're going to spend $65 million. And I asked the question, and we're going to spend more than $65 million, we are going to spend $22.5 million. I went to see the city auditor today, so I'm not going to lie, and I asked them what we're going to pay in interest. We're going to pay in interest $9.4, $9.5 million, and on a short-term interest rate, we are going to pay $1.65, a total of $12 million back. So you take the $22.5 million and ask $12 more million, and that rings it up to $35, $35 million. And my problem that I'm having, that I have, is that nobody can tell me what the future holds. We're borrowing right to the limit. So if we have a major problem, a major problem in this city, how are we going to afford to fix anything? How? I'm not against a new school. I've been, Counselor Green, you and I, Counselor Chris Merrick, Counselor Beazall, went on a tour of our city schools when we first got elected. Remember that tour? And they took us to work it needed. Mr. Dracula was there, and the previous superintendent was there. And I wasn't there to hear. I wanted to find out why our schools weren't doing good. But I also wanted to point out, I was told if I was that concerned about being the schools, I should run for the school committee. I said, no, I'd rather be a city council. I can do more for them than sitting on the sideline. But I think we're spending a lot of money, and I'm not finding fault with the city auditor. I think he's doing a marvelous job. My concern is we're going right to the end of what we can afford, and we don't know what the future holds. We all watch the news, we all hear the same thing, like I hear on TV, that Delta virus is coming back, they want us to start wearing our masks again, they want the kids in school to wear their mask, if I'm not mistaken. There could be a possible another shutdown? If we don't get $1 million from Great Wolf, and we got this kind of bill, how are we going to afford it then? How are we going to do it? That's all I'm saying. I'm saying $65 million is a lot of money, when I have no proof, when I tell you this, and I'm not going to lie to any of you, I don't have the proof on this side of the school, but I was told they paid less than $30 million for that project down there, and that school is only five years, six years old, six. Now, when somebody tells me, well, the cost went up, well, God, the cost went up 150 to 200 percent. My pay hasn't gone up. Social Security hasn't gone up that high. Wages for people working hasn't gone up. As a matter of fact, people don't want to go to work because they make more money on the sideline, because they're only getting because they're only getting $14, $15 an hour. How can you live? You know what I'm saying? And we're going up every year 2.5% on our taxes every year, you know? So I'm just saying, we ought to really think about it. We ought to say to them, "Why don't we send this back to the drawing board and come down to living in the price?" And I'll support you 100%. But other than that, $65 million plus an extra, an additional $12 million, we have to pay back, because we're borrowing, we're borrowing $22.5 million. And that's what we're paying back, $12 million. So that school is not costing the city of Pittsburgh $25.5. It's costing us $35 million plus. Thank you.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm actually a past student at Crocker Elementary School in the 1980s. And 20, 25 years later, when my kids went there, not much had changed, except things had gotten a lot worse. The building is very recognizable, but it's reached the end of its useful life. To see the office staff have to set up canopy tents in the administrative offices, because the roof is leaking so badly, they can't leave papers out on their desk. It just doesn't work. All three of my children were student refugees. They had to go to other towns and other schools to, for close to two years, when their property was closed down, when the steam pipe broke. We need to replace it. And it is a lot of money, but building a school costs a lot of money. It's been two decades since we built Pittsburgh High School. Costs have gone up since then. The size of school is a much smaller school. I don't have the specifics, but I would estimate it's about half the size. I approved that project when I was on the planning board, and it would not work as a replacement for Crocker School. It's not an apt comparison. The classrooms are much smaller, it's smaller overall. It's reasonable that this costs a lot more. We have a duty to invest in our properties and provide schools for our children. And we have the capacity and our bonding right now to do so. It is a lot of money, it is going to be tight. We have to make sure we can afford everything, but we do have a schedule, we have a plan. And now is the time to make that, to do that. We have funding from the state. If we stop this, we have to go back and start all over. And I forget, has it been about eight years that we went through this process to get approval from the state and funding? If we say no and turn around and start all over again, it's going to be another eight years before we're in a situation where we can make this investment in our children. So I think this is something we have to do and we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. And at the risk of opening a can of worms, I was informed that Ms. LaBelle Pierce from the school committee is on Zoom wishing to speak, but we would need to have the current motion withdrawn for that to happen. I apologize, I should have recognized her at the beginning of this discussion. I lost track. Counselor Gina Tally, I believe it's your motion.
Okay. Well, to not sound like a hypocrite, I will withdraw, but I'm going to do this that everyone else will.
Do I have unanimous consent to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I see no objection.
I'm not objecting, I'm in favor of.
Okay, I see no objection. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, welcome, and I apologize for not recognizing you earlier.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the withdrawal of the motion. It does change a little bit of what I was going to say. I did have some prepared remarks, but actually, a lot of the points that I was going to mention have actually already been mentioned by some of the counselors. I do want to thank the Finance Committee for its unanimous support. And I think a lot of the discussion in that meeting was really important about how and why the city can afford this investment at this time. And it is an investment. It is a statement and a support of really one of the most important charges that I believe you have and we have on the school committee, which is to educate our kids and to provide opportunities for our families that the schools have come to provide. It's so much more than, you know, the 7:30 to 3 o'clock menu at this point that the schools provide. And I would just ask you to think about really what I think Counselor Hesn, Van Hesn said, that it is difficult to get into the MSBA queue. And it's vital that we really seize the opportunity that we have right now. It's an exciting project. It's going to involve repositioning a lot of grade levels too, and that's very exciting in the city. I think it's going to be a great move to really kind of return middle school kids to middle school and elementary school kids to elementary. I just really urge you to really seize this opportunity. The time is right. I understand it's an uncertain world, but we certainly need to educate our kids. And a point was made at the Finance Committee meeting, you know, stating, it may be a little similar comment tonight, that, you know, a building doesn't make an education. And of course, the great teachers and staff at Crocker delivered a top-notch education in the various environments they've had to. But I would just add that a building can certainly become a distraction to students' learning, right? And as we've seen the issues in our older buildings, creating the disruption in our kids' education. This is, this is what we need to do, we need to invest this money. And I understand that $65 million is a tough number. But if you compare with, you know, MSBA projects around this state now, not, you know, 21 years ago, but now, you'll see that it is commensurate. And that is one final point that I want to make. Pittsburgh High School is now 21 years old. It's our newest building. And think of the great strides that we were able to make as a city, because we invested in Pittsburgh High School. It is a flagship production now. And the building, you know, it's 21 years old, it needs some, it needs upkeep. And I'm on the building needs subcommittee. And there's a lot of work that that group is doing and the school department is doing to make sure that we keep our buildings safe and acceptable. But I just think, you know, what would the city be without that, aren't how far, you know, without that Pittsburgh High School that has attracted and kept a lot of kids in this city and attracted a lot of families to even choice into that school because of that facility? So anyway, thank you so much for, you know, allowing the withdrawal of the motion. I appreciate being able to address you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. While we do not have a motion pending, are there any questions that counselors would like to ask, either to Ms. LaBelle Pierce or to any other city official on this matter?
Motion to approve 14321.
Second.
I now have a motion and second.
On the motion.
On the motion, we already have actually a list of counselors waiting to speak.
Okay.
So I will place you on that list. Counselor Gina Tally.
You know, the statements that were made earlier by one of my colleagues who serves on the committee with me, who voted for this, you would think after hearing what he said that he doesn't. But the building, the Pittsburgh High School building was built 22 years ago, and costs have gone up substantially since 22 years ago. This is a process that takes several years. This is a process that is largely dictated by MSBA, not the city. And why is that? Because MSBA is paying for well over 2/3 of it. So they're calling the shots, not us. They approve the school that we have to build, they approve the schematics, they approve the budget, they approve the funding. And the reason why we go along in tandem with them is it's like hitting the lottery. There are 351 cities and towns in this state. Every city and town has school building needs. The MSBA only has a finite pool of money to spend. If we don't go along with what MSBA wants to do, they'll just turn around and give it to the town next door. So we are lucky that they have selected us, because they don't have to. And so when you get this kind of an opportunity, you run with it, within reason. This cost that was put before us was painstakingly drawn down. It was even more money than $65 million. The fact that it's $65 million, but 22 is only to be paid by us, is the MSBA is covering the rest. Now, yes, there is interest in addition to the 22.5 million. It's not $12 million. And how do I know that without even looking at the paperwork? Because the interest on City Hall is $6 million. And that was 22.5 million that we borrowed as well. It's not $12 million. All right? And the debt sheet that Auditor Brooks substantiates that. The question as to whether this is affordable, whether we can't afford it, once again, we are funding this through a capital bond. We have a credit card in this city, like any individual. You don't spend over your limit. We have the bandwidth to take on Crocker Elementary at this level, along with City Hall, other projects, and the library. The schedule is before you. And as to affordability, if you look at the schedule, we will not reach peak on our principal and interest until 2028. And that peak point of principal and interest is the same budget number we were paying in FY19, the last year of the high school and the fire station on North Street. Meaning, we paid those two off. Our debt service went like this, because we don't have the debt anymore. But we kept the budget afloat to pay smaller capital projects in the meantime, because we didn't want to drop the budget and then have to raise it millions in three years. That makes no sense. That was the foresight that Auditor Brooks had a few years ago. We are preparing ourselves to get to that level again that we were in in 2019. So if you pay off a loan, what do people do? You pay off your car, you take out another loan for another car if you need to replace another one. Because you've now relinquished that, you have that bandwidth. This is no different. If you look at the debt schedule, the city is well within the affordability range to pay for this project in City Hall, because of the fact that our debt service was over $1 million more two years ago. And we're not going to get to that level again until 2028. So we could afford it two years ago, we can afford it in the future. It's no more complicated than that. And this building is a gigantic facility that some may think have bells and whistles. Well, I have a lot of residents and taxpayers who tell me all the time that if it's not going to be the roads, it's got to be the schools. And when we have the opportunity to put money into the schools, we get consternation for putting money into the schools. So, you know, the stuff about uncertainty, there is no uncertainty. It's a loan. It's a fixed principal and interest payment for 20 years. There is no uncertainty. We know what it's going to cost 20 years from now. Okay? The question is, can our budget handle it? And it has been proven 15 ways till Sunday, we can. So I will support this. You won't get another opportunity like this, because again, the last time we built a new school was 22 years ago. All right? And I'm willing to bet, we're not going to get another chance at this for another 20 to 30 years. Because that's how big of the need the state has in school funding. So to hold this hostage or cast dispersions on this because of other possibilities, that is, that's not what we're here to talk about. That makes no sense. Okay? Debt service is probably one of the easiest things you can forecast. Because when you take out a loan, you know from the start what it's going to cost you now and what it's going to cost you at the end. There's no surprises. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming.
No.
No.
Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, I find it really, really strange that we argue about keeping an old building that's all contaminated or whatever. But we argue against investing into our children's future. And then we say the kids don't care. And this is a public meeting, and a whole parents all around this city is watching. Because when you say kids don't care, we're, then that means we're supposed to care for them. And that's why we're here, to serve the people of this city. So I do care about the facilities that any child in Pittsburgh go into to sit down at a desk to learn. So I'm all for, I voted for it last week, and I'll vote for it again tonight, this investment that needs to be made. And soon as we get to the point where we stop looking at, when we talk about our children and our future, "Oh, that's too much, that's too much." But then we want to keep all, it's like keeping a beat-up car, you know, and thinking that it's going to last forever. And then you're sending your kids off to college in this clunker that could break down on the highway. But you can get them a new one. Get them a new school, so they can go into something and so they can learn and put forth their best effort, so they can come out and replace us. So we don't have to sit here for another 50 years arguing over nonsense. So let's make this necessary investment without any hesitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor the point that Counselor Hughes made. He made a similar point, that the counselor that is arguing against it was also the counselor that was kicking and screaming about getting rid of an excess surplus property. In addition to that, he also made the comment, which the public, who was in attendance here today, was utterly shocked, and I was too, that kids going to school, you know, six years to 11 years old, you can send them in a cave, you can give them a slate chalkboard, they'll be fine. Well, guess what? They don't use abacusers anymore. They don't use tape recorders anymore. Costs have gone up. And if we don't do this now, eight years that we've been negotiating with the state goes down the tubes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counsel Zaroa. Yeah, this is all, this is an investment in the city. This is all part of the revitalization of Pittsburgh, trying to attract people to the city. It's, I'll be voting in favor of it. I was on the building committee for Pittsburgh High School. It was opened in 2000, but I was on the building committee from 1996 to 2000. And there was planning that took place before 1996. So this is a long-term project. And people have invested a lot of time in making this project work. And I think it's going to be great for the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman for the second time.
Second time. Listen, I want to make it very clear to everybody out here. I never said I was against it. All I said, it's a lot of money. $65 million is a lot of money. And I also want to point out, in the year 2014, Counsel Green was on the council with me. We had, people had a budget, just like we have a budget. 800 homes, 600 homes went on foreclosure. They knew exactly what their budget was going to be, month after month after month. But nobody knows what the future's going to be. 600 homes went bankrupt in the city of Pittsburgh. And we're still suffering from that same bankruptcy 2014, because the bank got Pittsburgh classified as redlined. So I just want to point out you did it. And I never said I was against this school. As a matter of fact, I did vote for it. I did vote for this school. And I got a question I can't ask, but I'll ask Mr. Dracula anyway. You're the superintendent. Will you guarantee the city of Pittsburgh that you'll give us $100,000 a year, every year, to put in capital improvements? Into an account for capital improvements? We let our school buildings go down. 22 years, our long-term school needed to be fixed. We didn't fix it for 22 years. We've just let the schools go fall apart. We don't invest any kind of money. And you got $150,000, I was told, you can spend on capital improvements. Anything over $150, the city has to take over. So if you would give the city $100,000 a year to put into a capital improvement or into, what do you call it, Marcus, the bank there? Where you want to fix up your buildings?
Capital improvements.
Yeah, capital improvement. You tell us right now if you can give us $100,000 a year.
Counselor.
You'll have no problem.
Counselor, he can't address the council right now.
I have no problem with that.
A point of order. Point of order?
Point of order?
But anyway, that's the only thing I'm saying. But I never said I was against it. And what I said, and I'll tell you again, I couldn't tell you.
Counselor, a point of order has been raised. What is your point of order, Counselor Fleming?
We're going off subject here.
Yes, I'll sustain that point of order. Counselor, please, please stick just to the question of this loan, not to school finances in general.
Well, I'm just giving an example that we don't take care of our buildings. The school department doesn't take care of the buildings. That's all I'm saying. So, and all I'm saying is that I went to school, I went to school, and I'll tell you again, I said at the last meeting, I can't, I couldn't tell you what the color was. But I do remember, and I'll re- But I do remember, and I'll repeat it, I do remember the good teachers and I don't, and I remember the bad teachers. I remember the good kids and I remember the bad kids. So to tell me there was a hole in the wall, I couldn't tell you if there was a hole in the wall. There might have been a hole in the wall, who knows, when I'm only in the first or second grade or third grade. My major concern was to go outside and play baseball, basketball, or dodgeball. I wasn't worried about the school and how it looked. Really, tell me the truth.
Were you one of the good kids or the bad kids?
And that's it. But anyway, that's it.
We need to...
Okay, so...
That's it, Mr. President. You don't have to say anymore.
Thank you. I'm going to say, I'm an old-fashioned guy, much, much more than my age. So I'll freely admit, when we got the report of the design team and so forth, we saw this, you know, all the, all the, what you might call the bells and whistles, the biophilic design and all that. I admit, I'm sitting here, I'm going, okay, but I'm not an education professional. You know, I don't know, I don't think those things would have made a difference to me, but that was decades ago. I don't remember what I was like as a kid. I don't know if, you know, I did have well-maintained classrooms. I can't say if I would have learned as well if I hadn't. You know, I don't remember what color my classrooms were or anything, but I do remember there weren't leaks in the ceilings, there weren't drafts in the windows, and there was plenty of space, you know, things worked. I'm not an education professional. If they say that the research shows that these are the things that help children to learn, I'm not in a position to say they're wrong. You know, it may not make intuitive sense to me, but I'm not in a position to say they're wrong. That's not my expertise, just like I wouldn't expect Superintendent Jokola to, you know, to tell me what the law says about something, because that's what I went to school for, that's what I studied. So I will, I voted in favor of this the first time and in committee. I'll be voting for it again. And I hope that everyone else will as well, because this is important. We need good schools so that we can have well-educated kids, so that we can have, like Counselor Hughes said, so that we can have the next generation of people serving this city and making this city a better place. They can't do that if we don't equip them properly, and we can't do that if we have substandard facilities because we don't want to shell out the money. It costs money. Yeah, it's expensive. It's really expensive. No one is going to sit here and say 65 million dollars is pocket change. But it's worth it. That said, if I have no further comments...
Move to approve 14321.
We do have a motion, actually. We have a motion and second. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Because this is a loan order, and this is in fact the second vote on the loan order, we do need a roll call vote for this. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
I guess I'll say yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor De Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. Vice President Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Affairs Committee met on July 13th. There were two items on the agenda, 04621. Counselor Marcus De Natale to petition that the new Pittsburgh City Hall Legislative Building be named Dave Clark Legislative Building in honor of former school committee member, City Councilor WEIM/WPKZ Radio and FATV Sports Broadcaster Dave Clark for his many decades of public service to the city of Pittsburgh. There were several people who spoke in favor of the petition citing Mr. Clark's contributions and service in various and many ways to the city of Pittsburgh. Those people who voted against it, were not voting against Counselor Clark's contributions per se, but just had made a point that they didn't think that the building should be named after anyone. The motion was made to approve, and the motion failed by a two to three vote. The second petition on the agenda was 13621. City Solicitor Pusitiri to appoint certain special counselors, special municipal employees, including Joseph Baldiga and the firm Myrick O'Connell de Mali and Bouge L.L.P. as outlined in the enclosed petition, and that petition was amended. That was approved five to zero.
Thank you. Since, obviously, the first of these petitions is going to occasion a fair bit of discussion, I'm going to ask that we address 13621 separately and first so that we can get it handled.
Move to accept the committee's report on 13621.
I have a motion and second to accept the report and recommendation on 13621. Speaking on the motion, if there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. On 04621, I know the mayor would like to make a prepared statement. I'd like to briefly address the council first. This is, obviously, a subject on which passions run high, and understandably so. I only had the privilege of serving with Dave Clark for two years on the council. But one thing became very, very clear to me in those two years was that one of the things that Dave Clark valued on this council, above all else, was a commitment to collegiality, to civility, and to friendship, to being able to argue against and vote against one another, and shake hands and be friends at the end of the night. So before we begin debating a proposal to honor Dave Clark and his legacy, I would like to implore my fellow counselors that no matter how you intend to vote, if you want to honor him, honor that. And remember that we are colleagues here and hopefully friends, and that we can disagree without interrupting that, without becoming enemies, without thinking less of one another for our disagreement. Please learn that from Counselor Clark's legacy and apply it here tonight. That said, Mr. Mayor, you may address the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. After this evening, this opportunity to speak seems to be coming more and more fleeting. So I really thank you for this opportunity to speak. Good evening, councilors and members of the community, both at home and present tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my friend David Clark. I may prolong these proceedings by adding my voice to the others who have pointed out that David is indeed worthy of this honor. But I will be brief. The degree of hesitancy on the part of those who oppose this proposal is unfortunate. David's contributions certainly rise to a level that warrants such an honor. You may be reluctant to establish a precedent when buildings or spaces are brought forth in this naming process. What is before you is an opportunity to recognize and memorialize one of Pittsburgh's favored sons who exemplified humility and a powerful love of the city. Ladies and gentlemen, seize this opportunity to demonstrate the gratitude and thanks for a selfless life that contributed to making our lives a bit better. You will not regret your decision. Go with God, Professor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do apologize for the lack of opportunity to speak.
Following the rules, Counselor President.
Or somewhat unbending on the subject.
Yep, following the rules. That's fine.
Thank you. That said, the matter is now before the council.
Move to accept the committee's report on 04621.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the report of the committee on 04621. Speaking on the motion. Counselor De Natale.
So this is my fourth time speaking on this. And I have to admit that I was, I guess I was rather naive when I put this forward, thinking to myself that this would get, if not unanimous support, near unanimous support. It's been a real battle these last four months to just get six of us to vote for this. And I did not intend to put the family through any hardship or pain, being so close to his passing. My intentions were heartfelt. When this unfortunate episode occurred, I said, this guy has got to be honored. And the first idea that came into my head was this facility. Dave Clark's 40-year career is the cake that's already been baked. The icing on that cake is this facility and his direct involvement with it. I don't have to justify him being on this building because of the fact that he was instrumental in its creation, which I cannot stress enough. But the fact that his 40-year career warrants an honor like this. I have heard some of my colleagues say that, you know, they don't want this to be a referendum on the man. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, in my opinion, that's exactly what this is, because it's a petition to name it after him. It's not after somebody else. It's not after something else, it's after him. So you're voting on whether you believe he deserves this honor or not. And how do you arrive at that? Based on his credentials. It's not based on who else should be considered. It's not based on what he did. There's no scoring metric. I put a suggestion forward four months ago. Not a single solitary member of the public has come to a meeting to voice opposition to this other than one person. And his testimony was, he thinks he should be honored, just not this way. And I've heard that from a lot of my colleagues. He deserves an honor, just not this one. You either are honored or you're not. There's no varying degrees of honor. You know, we're not going to honor him after this building, but we'll honor him this way. Well, what's the difference? It's not as if he has no connection to this facility itself, let alone the name of it. This is the people's house. Dave embodied constituent services. You know, I heard last week that Mr. Clark was not flashy legislatively, he didn't do anything monumental or earth-shattering. Well, I got news for everybody, neither have I. And in my opinion, none of us have. Because our main responsibility as elected officials is constituent services. A lot of what we do collectively, no one sees in the public. Someone calls you, emails you, writes to you, they immediately expect you to respond to them immediately and advocate for them without fanfare or recognition. And if you don't do that, you lose them. Mr. Clark was a model public servant who was elected and re-elected by the people of this city multiple times over because he was a successful and effective city councilor. We are all effective city councilors, not because of anything flashy we may have filed, but because of how we are with the constituency. You know, I've had people tell me for years, they don't remember the votes I've taken. They remember what I did for them personally seven years ago, eight years ago. Oh, I know De Natale didn't vote the way I wanted on that tax bill, but, you know, you got those two trees that the branches were falling down on my car removed the next week. That's all they care about. That we are bridges between local government and the constituent. That's our primary function. So when someone or anyone says that he didn't do anything flashy or wow as a legislature, none of us have. What he did do, what we do, is he was phenomenal with constituent services. I understand that he could be named here, or he could be named there. The argument that there are other people that are worthy of consideration is not lost on me, folks. You can say that about any situation like this. Anytime someone wants to name a facility or a structure after someone, there's going to be 50 people who have names put forward that they should be considered too. If we take that tact, then we should never name anything, not just after this building, but anywhere in this city, ever again. Because there's always going to be someone who says, what about this guy? What about this woman? Or this man? What about these people? It's a weak argument. Now, I, there was a comment made also about how quick this was done after he passed. If the family did not want me to do this, they would have told me not to do this. And I would have abided. I would have gladly abided by their wishes. You see them here tonight, you see them here, you saw them here last week. Anyone who thinks that the timing is not good, they're the only ones who get to make that call, not us. They're not here telling you to vote against it because it's too soon. Of course I filed this after he passed. Because that's how strongly I believe that I didn't want to miss an opportunity to get this man the recognition he deserves. And so I'm sorry everyone feels uncomfortable about whether this is a referendum on him or not, but it is. It is. Who's it about? It's not about anybody but him. And I implore my colleagues, I've heard all the comments. I've heard some say that we shouldn't name it after anyone. I've heard some say, he deserves something, just not this. And I've heard people say, well, what about if we did plaques? Folks, you can name this building and do plaques. It's not an either-or proposition. But I want to impress upon folks very strenuously, as I have before, no one on this council has been able to give me one solitary compelling reason why this shouldn't happen. In fact, everyone agrees it should happen, but in different ways, which makes no sense to me. Anyone from the public who is against this, and there are few and far between, only two have reached out to me directly to say, I would rather it be named after this person, but he deserves something. No one has said to me, he deserves nothing. All you have are people here before you in favor, as well as the scores of emails and phone calls you've gotten. Okay? This is a legislative building, he was a legislator, but he was also someone who did everything selflessly. All right? He didn't care about the notoriety. So I'll leave with this. The arguments that have been made up to this point do not rise to the level, in my opinion, of why this can't happen. And what I've tried to do as much as I can to defeat the argument that everyone else deserves this too, or more people deserve this than just him, he has a direct connection to this facility. No one else who has passed in city's history with his credentials has had a handle in this building being here. I won't even say he casted the deciding vote because all it took was one more no vote and it wouldn't have passed. But what I will say, which is undeniable, is if it were not for his contributions, this building wouldn't exist. And I can't stress that enough. And I don't know why people are overlooking that central fact of this. Without him, this wouldn't be here. That's his connection. That's his connection. And his 40-year career speaks for itself beyond that. And so, I've said this all before, and I'm saying it again because I am imploring on some of my colleagues who I have the utmost respect for, who have said to me that they are open, or have said in public session, "They are open to reconsidering." I implore you folks to reconsider. I've had people say to me in the last two weeks, you know, "I watched the Legislative Affairs Committee last week. I mean, I don't know what the big deal is." What is the big deal? Does he satisfy the merits of being named on here? Everyone says yes. What is the big deal? There are some hills that some of us choose to die on. I don't know why this is one of them. No one's offered any alternative names. And the petition that was put forward to name the press box after him, that's not going to circumvent my petition. And I think it's also a travesty that the school committees dragging their feet on that one. I mean, who are we talking about here? But I just want to make those points, because I've heard them all. It's too soon, shouldn't be named after anybody, what about these 45,000 people? I don't know what else I can say to get six votes for something so basic as this. You know, you look at the public and their reaction to this, this has been in the public docket for four months. Four months. And as the petitioner, I've had no one tell me, "This is a travesty if you do this." So if there are people worried about public backlash, there is no public backlash. Did anybody show up tonight and sit there against this? No. Did anybody show up and sit there against this the last three times we've done this? So I don't know what the issue is, and no one's going to convince me otherwise. Not because I filed it, but because no one's given a good reason. So, in closing, in closing, I watched some of my colleagues last week struggle. They were really struggling to justify them voting against this. Lot of pauses, a lot of thinking, they're struggling hard. And that said something to me that I don't know what the struggle is. If you're against something, you immediately get it right out and say it? And one did, and others did not? It was a struggle. I don't understand what the struggle is. So, in my opinion, if this doesn't pass, forget the fact that this building wouldn't be named after anyone in the future, unless there's a whole new council, which could happen. But the reasons given would indicate that you would never name anything after anyone. So I implore my colleagues, not the four who have already publicly stated they're supportive of this, I would implore my colleagues to please think about this and not get so heated about it, as if this would be a big mistake if we were to do this. I put this forward with no intention to make anyone feel uncomfortable. Okay? And like I said in the very beginning, I felt I was naive in doing this. I didn't think it was going to be that big of a deal. I thought Dave Clark was phenomenal. Everyone agrees. And I was able to directly tie him to this facility, and I'm still struggling to get six people. I really hope I get six people tonight. And honor this man the way he deserves. Because every time I came into council chambers when I was a newbie with Counselor Starr, former Counselor Starr, Dave was the first one sitting in that room every time I went to a meeting. He was the first one there. Going over his notes, looked up at me and said, "Doctor." And he was one of the reasons why I wanted to continue being a councillor. Because he had such a poise, a presence about him, where he was so calm and collected. And like I said earlier about Counselor Van Hazenga, he was another one that everyone kept saying, "You need to act more like." Because he thought, he kept his mouth shut, and he made a decision based on the facts without popping off. And I'm never going to get there. My time has passed. So, he was a personal friend, a personal mentor, and I believe this council will do it justice in giving me the six, not giving me, giving him the six votes necessary to name this facility after him, of which if he were not, if it were not for him, this wouldn't happen. This is the people's house we're here on loan by the people. Dave embodied public service and people's service. So, the arguments that he was more into sports or broadcasting, that's how much stuff this guy did. He did everything. Everything. And those times I'd drive to work, corner of South and Electric, and he'd be there trimming the hedges around the Fitchburg sign, or sweeping up along the walkway when he was a Ward One councillor. I pulled down the window, this was, I don't know when this was, I said to him, "Professor, what? It's 7 o'clock. What are you doing out here?" He said, he goes, "I thought I'd get some exercise in before I go to work." I go, "This is exercise?" He goes, "What can I say? I love doing it." That's it. I've said enough. And if this doesn't pass, it's not because I didn't try. And I ask all of you to please consider and reconsider your positions. If you're worried about public backlash, don't be. There is no public backlash. Four months this has been on the docket, no one's had any problems with it. None of, none of that have come here to speak. Not one. And I'm the petitioner, two people have told me they're against this, but he deserves an honor. Whatever that means. Thank you.
Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President. What can we say about an individual who life speaks for itself? There's not much we can add. When a person lives in such a way, and works in such a way where their commitment can be seen, and that's what I saw in Dave. He didn't talk a lot. You just saw his commitment to Fitchburg. You saw his commitment to the betterment of Fitchburg. What stuck out to me when Counselor Deanna Tally put this petition forward, I said, "Wow, man, I would like to co-sponsor this petition with you." He said, "I didn't even think about that." You know, when it came to me, I just put it in. I said, "Well, my name will have to be on it. I'm going to support it anyway." It's funny to me how people on this council, "I'm all for Fitchburg, I'm all for Fitchburg," but they point out all the negatives about Fitchburg. Dave never once did that. Dave always wanted Fitchburg to be better. He wanted the council to be better. He wanted people to be better. He wanted to invest, do all he could to make sure Fitchburg got the necessary investment that it needed. He didn't mock the fact of Fitchburg trying to get a new city hall when the other one was falling apart. He didn't make fun of that. He worked diligently to do all he could to make it happen. As I sit here tonight and think about a man that I consider to be a friend, we wouldn't, we didn't go to each other's houses, we didn't have dinner together. There's some people you know when you come into their presence, that there's something special about them, and Dave was one of those individuals. So I ask my colleagues tonight to reconsider your position on this. I'm not begging, but I am asking. Yes, we could have named it after someone else, but no other name came forward. If a name came forward, I can guarantee you, if they were worthy, Dave would say, "I'm all for it." It was a situation that happened a number of years ago, and I was very upset about it. And I knew just about every member on the city council, but only Dave Clark called me and gave me his position on it, and told me how he felt about it. And he didn't agree with me. We're not puppets, we don't agree on everything. But the fact that he took time out of his schedule to call me, or stop at Fitchburg State, I was going to see my wife at lunch, and he would stop on the sidewalk and just have conversations about Fitchburg, not gossiping, or not taking selfies, no, just talking about the issues that's going on with Fitchburg, and how we as a team can make Fitchburg better. Because he always considered himself a part of the team. Not the team. He considered himself a part of the team. And so I asked my colleagues tonight to, "Let's do what Dave would have done." I asked his daughter that night, "What would Dave do?" So I ask you tonight, "What would Dave do if you were in his position and he was a part of the debate to honor your work? What do you think he would do? All of us, what do we think he would do?" I don't think there's one of us, whether he agree with you or not, I don't think he would say, "Oh, no, 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 no." I don't think he would do that. Knowing him the way I did, I believe he would say, if it was Counselor Fleming, Counselor Bochman, Counselor Green, if any one of the names went forward, I believe they would support it. I believe he would. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming.
Yes. I wasn't prepared to speak. Well, I sort of prepared, and then I said, "I'm just going to speak from the heart." And then the whole, you know, the family and Counselor Hughes and Counselor, I just drew a blank, Deanna Tally, pretty much said everything I wanted to say. I didn't know Dave as long. And honestly, I didn't have an opinion on this one way or another. In fact, I just made my decision two nights ago, how I was going to vote on this. And one story I want to share, I remember being, when I was on the school committee, I had gone to the Goodrich Academy graduation, and Dave was there. And he was sitting next to me, and the kids were walking through, and at the end, he looked over, and there were tears coming down from his eyes. Just thinking about it brings tears to my eyes. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what a kind, loving person this is." And like I said, I've had no opposition. Nobody's come forward to me and said, "No, don't do this," other than I had one other name suggested to me, and no petition was brought in. And I thought about it. I tried to, you know, why and why not? And I couldn't find any reason to not name this building after him. And I'm not, I'm going to vote in favor of this petition. And to the other councillors, I mean, other than I don't think the building should be named after anyone, it's not a good enough reason. We name buildings and streets in the city after everybody. And I mean, I think we're in a culture right now where we just want to wipe everything clean and start fresh. And to me, that bothers me. If anybody is deserving of this, Dave Clark is deserving of this. So I am voting in favor of this petition.
Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counselor Zerol. I voted in favor of this at the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting, and I'm still in favor of it. I want to address Dave's daughter, Kim. Is he deserving? Yes, he is. And why stop naming buildings now? We shouldn't. We should name this after Dave. And I want to be, I just want to state that, and I want to be brief, because it is getting late. But I really am in favor of this. And I hope some of the other councils will join me in supporting this. Thank you.
So, I'm speaking only for myself. I wasn't and am not struggling to justify anything. My struggle is to articulate my convictions in a way that is honest, but that also is compassionate and respectful towards both the memory of a very highly respected former colleague, and to all of those here in support of him and of this petition. I speak hesitantly, not because I'm unsure of myself, but because I want to make sure that each word means what I intend. Because if I say it wrong and cause unnecessary pain or consternation to anyone, I can't rewind it. So I'm speaking carefully, not hesitantly. I do think that there has to be a precedent question. There always is in cases like this. We can't, simply because a petition has been put forward to name the building, we can't therefore simply take it for granted that the building will be named for someone and simply ask, "Does Dave Clark deserve that it be him?" If that were the only question, then I don't think this would have gotten to this many meetings. If we were all convinced that the building should be named after someone, and the only question were, "Should it be Dave Clark?", I don't think we would have had to debate this so long or agonize over it so much. Because he was an excellent colleague, an excellent citizen of Fitchburg, and just an all-around good guy. Like I said at the beginning of this discussion, this is something where I admired the virtues that Counselor Clark displayed, both on and off this council. I admired him as a councillor and as a person. And I do think he is absolutely deserving of honor. Not all honors are identical. We have, we have many streets, we have many bridges, we have one legislative building. We can't simply argue that it's no different. It is different. That doesn't settle the issue, but it is different. We can't pretend it's exactly the same. We can't pretend that if we don't believe that this particular singular building should be named after someone, then nothing should be named after anyone. That doesn't follow. And it also doesn't follow to say, "We believe he should be honored. This is a proposal to honor him. Therefore, this is the way we should honor him." That also doesn't follow. I do think he should be honored. I liked Counselor Starr's suggestion of naming something in the building after him. That would be something I would be very interested in following up on. But I do think that this particular building, as part of our city hall campus, shouldn't be named after someone. Buildings are named after people all the time, but city halls usually aren't. And this is city hall. We have a detached legislative building, which most cities don't have, but this is still city hall. And I do think that makes a difference. It's, and it's not, it is not about, "Well, Dave Clark isn't worthy of the honor because someone else deserves it more." It's not. A few weeks ago, the city clerk sent me a list of every councillor who had ever served in this city. I don't remember how many names were on it, but there were an awful lot. And you could run down that list of names, propose each one of them to name the building, and I'd say the same thing. There's not, there's not one of them that I'd say, "Oh, well, this one's..." There's not, there's not one of them that I'd say, oh, well, this one's good enough. Not Dave Clark, but this one. I wouldn't say that. It really is just a question of, is this building something we want to use for this There is, I, I will second with no qualification, every positive thing that has been said tonight about Dave Clark. I have nothing negative to say about him. And that's a point that's been made many times by supporters of this petition. No one can give anything against him? Of course not. That is not the position of those of us who are not in support of naming the legislative building. It's not that Dave Clark is not deserving or that there's anything wrong with Dave It's that before we can ask, should Dave Clark be on this building, we first have to ask if anyone should. And if you answer no to that, you're not saying anything at all about any person who could be put forward. You're saying that it's just not something you want to do. I mean, I, I can't think of a relevant analogy that won't be inappropriately flippant. And like I said, I want to be careful with my words and not come across as flippant. So I won't give the analogy that I'm searching for, but, but we have questions like that in our lives all the time, where before you can pick from a range of options, you first have to decide whether you're going to do any of them at all, whether the thing of which you're picking options is a thing you're going to do. And that's, that's where I am. That's where I believe the other counselors who have expressed skepticism or opposition to this are. It's just, it is a question of, we want to honor him, but not this way. I don't see why that isn't a valid position to take. There are other ways and I am very much in support of finding them. I do not want anyone in this generation or the next to be unaware of the contributions Dave Clark has made to this city. This is solely for me about whether we put a name on the legislative building. That's all. With that said, Counselor Schultz for the second time.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counsel Zerola. I will say that I have to respectfully disagree with your, your thinking. I, I don't view this building as, as City Hall. We have a City Hall next door. This is the legislative building. And I think it's perfectly appropriate to name this building after Dave Clark. I don't see any reason why we're not doing that and why anybody would be in opposition to it. He was a, he was a humble servant. He didn't, he didn't have, like someone said during the public comment section, he didn't have any money to pay to have this building named after him. He did it with his, with his service to this city. And he was a person, as one, I think it was Sharon McCuskey said, he, yeah, he promoted the city. There's so many people that do not promote the city. And I've always been a person that always promoted the city. And that's what I will continue to do. And I think we will promote the city by naming this building after Dave Clark. Thank you.
Any further comment on this motion? Counselor Hughes for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I heard someone say about, there's no comparison when you're talking about naming this facility versus all the rest of parks and bridges and roads and things like that. There is, it's certainly the same thing. You know, if you decide you're going to name a, a street, that's, that's a public street. It's like this is a public building. All, all these things belong to the public if, if we're paying, if taxpayers are paying, it's, it's certainly the same thing. You know what I mean? To, to consider that. You know, so to say it's not the same, you know, kind of, kind of bothers me a little bit, but it, because it is the same. If you name a school, if you name, whatever you name, if you decide to name something, it's the same. Now, I could say, well, this next to City Hall, so I'll take this out of the equation. Doesn't, it's two separate buildings. I can understand that this chambers was inside City Hall, but it's two separate buildings. It's on a campus, it's like you go to Pittsburgh State, it's Pittsburgh State campus, but it has multiple buildings. Same, it's the same, same concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Just lastly, because I have one more chance at this. It was, it was said earlier, I, I don't want everyone to think that when I said that I thought this would get unanimous or unanimous support, that I, I was, it was almost, I always felt entitled that this would get approved. You know, just, you know, whoever submits a name, you got to go with it. I didn't, that wasn't my calculus. My calculus was, this is a new building that's never existed before in city's history. It is detached from City Hall and it is a legislative building. That's what we call it on our public meeting documents. And, and I said to myself that if I'm going to do this, I better be damn sure why he deserves it above anybody else. And that's why I kept imploring on people that he was directly involved with this building's Without his involvement, it wouldn't be here. And so the, the, the statement made about precedent, well, there's, the opposite is true with precedent. This doesn't pass tonight, we set precedent in that case too. Because there is a process, whether we like it or not, to name facilities or landmarks after someone or something. And in my 14 years, I've never done this before. First time I've done it. And probably if Dave, I, I, this just came to my mind as something tremendously nice to do. And again, I have not heard anything compelling as to why it can't be done. I certainly have not heard any groundswell of opposition from people in the public. None. To which I go back to, I, I don't understand the hesitation or the concern if you were to support this. I can guarantee you, as sure as my bank account, that you're not going to get calls and emails tomorrow deriding your decision tonight. It's not going to happen. You may get calls and emails from people deriding a decision against this, but certainly not for this. That, that's not a threat, that's a reality because of what's happened the last four months. No one has been banging our doors down not to do this. The opposite is true. And I'm not sitting here saying that if you don't support this, you don't like the man. I didn't say that. What I've been saying is, in my experience, if I'm going to vote against something, there has to be a really good reason why I'm going to vote against it. And none of the reasons provided in the last four months are legitimate, or not legitimate, are compelling arguments against this. We're not talking about somebody who didn't live here. We're not talking about somebody who is a millionaire or a billionaire. We're not talking about somebody who, I'll just stop there with that. It just, we're, we're talking about someone who has a record that no one can deny is worthy of honor and consideration. But this building specifically has a direct tie with him. And that's why I chose this building. And, and so if the hesitation is, the hesitation to me sounds like it's with the building itself. It's not, he deserves an honor or he deserves to be recognized. It's, he doesn't, we, we shouldn't do this for anyone here. To which I say, well, I would like to know what other buildings and facilities in this city are, are immune to having a name put on them then. Because again, if, if, if it's better to have his name on a, on a, on a baseball field or, or FATV landmark, but not here, I just disagree that there are not varying degrees of honors. There are. No, there aren't varying degrees of honors. An honor is an honor. So I, I've heard nothing compelling. I've heard no reasons why this shouldn't be done. And certainly no one from the public has been telling us, this is a, this is not good if you do this, you set precedent or you don't. Nothing's been said like that. So I didn't expect it to pass unanimously because, just because. I expected it because of who the man was and I thought this would be a tremendously easy sell. And it hasn't been, to my great shock. So this is my last statement imploring my colleagues. Even though I may not act like it sometimes, I respect what each one of you do for this city and the time you put into this job. We get a lot of stress, we get a lot of attacks, but you stand firm against those because of what you believe in, why you're here. And you're here because the people trust you to make sound decisions and support them. He was the exact same way. So there are matters we discuss all the time that you would think would get a score of scrutiny and consternation and, and, and debate on, and they get nothing. But this is a hill some are willing to die on. I, I will never understand it. Not because I filed it, I just, to me, I don't like the argument that we shouldn't name this after anybody. Who says? Why not? Why not? I mean, if it weren't him, if it were somebody else, I want to listen to the merits. But he's before us, it's been stated countless times why he deserves it. And once again, in closing, no one in city's history can point to the fact that they had a direct responsibility with this building being here. This building did not exist before 2021. It's never existed. But he as a legislator, his legislative actions made this building possible. He did not believe in this building and what it meant for the downtown revitalization. It wouldn't be here. Please, put that in your calculus. That's what sets him apart from the rest. And again, if we're not going to name it after him outside the building, but we're going to name it for him inside the building, I go back to what everyone has been saying to me for four months. What is the issue? He can be named inside, but he can't be named outside. That makes no sense. Thank you.
I have to note, first, I just, I do want to note that, for myself at least, I do take it for granted that Counselor Dean Natale offered this position, this petition only with the best and sincerest of intentions. I can't speak for all of us, but for myself at least, I do not feel that there was any ulterior motive, any attempt to whatever, you know, anything that you could come up with, I don't think was the case. I think that it was a sincere request with sincere motives. Also, I think many supporters of this petition have reiterated that they do not agree with the argument that this shouldn't be named after anyone. Well, yes, of, of course they don't. If they did, they wouldn't be supporting it. That's, that's who we are as an 11-member body. We can have indissoluble differences of opinion on things. Some of us see no rational reason why we shouldn't name the building after someone. Some of us feel fairly strongly that we shouldn't name the building after someone. The rationales don't have to make sense to each other. We just have to respect that we have different opinions on the matter. And there are, I don't want to say there are differing degrees of honor, because then someone will probably interpret me as saying that Counselor Clark only deserves a lesser degree of honor, and that is not what I'm saying in the slightest. What there are are specific ways of potentially honoring people, which are easier or harder due to their nature. It's easy to name a park bench after someone. No one even raises an eyebrow unless they think the person was horrible. But naming a building, naming a mountain, naming, there are bigger and smaller asks, bigger, you know, heavier and lighter lifts in terms of dedicating someone to someone, something to someone. And it's for that reason that I think this building is not an appropriate dedication to any individual. It's not because I don't think Dave Clark is worthy of such a high honor. It's because I think that this building is not something that should be used in that If, I mean, I can't off the top of my head list everything that I would be okay with naming after someone in the city. But if I did, and you proposed anything on that list to be named after Dave Clark, I'd vote for it. I'll say that right now. I don't know what the list is, I haven't made the list. It's just that this building isn't on it. And I understand that doesn't make sense to some people. I understand some people don't get the reasoning behind that. And I'm sorry that I haven't done a better job of articulating it. But that is the reason. It's, I, I'm repeating myself and I apologize, but I'll repeat one more time. I have nothing negative whatsoever to say about Counselor Dave Clark as a counselor or as a man. And I would be pleased to honor him in any way that I would feel would be appropriate to honor any person in this city. The only reason I will be voting against this petition is because I don't feel that it is appropriate for any individual, not because I don't feel that Dave Clark is good enough for it. Any further comments on this motion? Seeing none, there is a motion and second to approve the report of the Legislative Committee on this matter. A yes vote to approve the report of the committee would be to reject the petition, just to be clear. And Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to take this as a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Schultz.
No.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
No.
Counselor Dean Natale.
No.
Counselor Fleming.
No.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Samantha, I'm going to close your mouth.
The motion succeeds six to five. We now have a report from the Planning Board offered by Mr. Tom Skrowski. It is a collection of minor clerical edits to the zoning ordinance. If there is no objection to the edits, it will be forwarded without debate.
I have a small amendment.
If you wish to make an amendment, you would have to make a motion to contest the changes and then it would be sent to the next full city council meeting if the motion passed.
Let me just ask you, it's not substantive?
Mm-hmm.
It's the letter A versus as. I don't know if it's worth, I don't think it's worth sending it back to a committee. I just, I noticed it as I was reviewing.
Thank, no, I applaud your diligence. Thank, no, I applaud your diligence, and I will note, I caught something as well as I was reviewing. My recommendation, solely recommendation, would be that you do what I did, which is send it in an email to Mr. Skrowski, and he can add it to the next batch of clerical edits that we'll go through.
Okay.
Which can then be brought to the council at a later date.
Thank you.
Any objections? All right, the clerical edits are accepted. We now have a public hearing, 14521 Verizon New England Incorporated to request permission to place one four-inch conduit on Gameon Way as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the public hearing open. Just a moment. We have, thank you, we have Don Vauner registered on Zoom. If he is still with us, oh, I see, he just came in. Mr. Vauner, if you would like to present to the council, you may proceed. Mr. Vauner, you are muted.
Clearly, you could not hear me, okay. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, so can I assume that everybody has the video that shows what's going on at the site?
Counselors? I'm seeing no negatives here, so yes, you can make that assumption.
My point here is simply just to support this plan as it's put forth and answer any questions that any of you may have. So I don't need to say much more than you can see on the plan itself, unless you have questions about it.
All right, questions from counselors. Counselor Boishman.
I have one question. I was up there today, and I noticed they already put the pipe in.
Mr. Vauner?
I was not aware of that. That's not what's supposed to happen, that's why we have these meetings. So are you sure it was?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to verify. I went to pole 15, there's two pipes. There's one for electrical, and there's one on the side of the electrical, a four-inch pipe on pole 15, according to what he has here. Unless they're going to put a third pole pipe in.
So Counselor, are you sure that the pipe that you saw was Verizon's?
It was a four, I can't tell you, it was a, I'm just saying the pipe's in. There was a pipe in next to, for unitage pole, pipe.
Okay, well, since Mr., well, since Mr. Vauner says he's unaware of this, there's probably no point in belaboring it here and now. We're not going to get any additional information on it. But Mr. Vauner, I'll just note that there's every possibility that it's not your pipe, but if it is, please get back to us or get back to the city clerk about how that happened so that we can address it.
Of course, of course. Yeah, I'm obviously embarrassed about this if it is our pipe. Was the street dug up at all, Counselor?
What's that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat, Mr. Vauner?
Was the, can Counselor Boishman let me know if the street was dug up at all?
The street, the street was dug up, and it was already paved over. I wanted to make sure that I was at the right location, so I got out, the next pole right down the street, headed down to Industrial Road was pole 14, and there was just nothing on pole 14. And I went up to the one between Ropa Road and Industrial, right in the middle, there were two pipes there. It's a brand-new pole.
So Counselor, if there's, if the street has already been dug up and repaved, it sounds like this is probably something that was done a little while back by another company. Unless we have evidence otherwise, I don't want to put Mr. Vauner in the hot seat on this.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just asking if that was his pole. There's two big four-inch ones up there. I know the difference between a four-inch pipe and a two-inch pipe.
Right, right.
There's a big four-inch.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get any certainty on that tonight, Counselor.
All right.
But we'll look into it.
No, but I can, I can speak to the fact that pole 15 is an existing pole, it was there already, and we're not digging down Industrial Road, at least that's not the plan. The plan was to go up northeastward along Gameon Way, all the way up to, you know, their future property or current, I don't know if the building is there or not yet, but, and it was supposed to continue up that way after you folks vote on it, is the plan.
I can't understand what he talked, but I'm not that much worried about it. All I know is that there was two poles, two pipes sticking out of the ground, going up about probably six to eight feet up in the air. They were four inches on pole 15. On pole, when I say pole 15, utility pole 15, T2, and I went up to T2 to make sure it was at the right location.
All right.
And it was all dug up and resurfaced.
So Madam Clerk, could you please put a note in the record and maybe send out an email in case I forget, to Commissioner Bosinetto to ask if he can verify what that pipe is and whether it pertains to this petition or not? Until then, though, you know, especially if Counselor Boishman is not particularly concerned about it.
I'm not that concerned about it. If you guys, we're going to pass it anyway, why were you going to stop progress? I just asked that question, if they already dug it up. There was a nice job they did resurfacing that part of where they dug up.
Okay, high praise. Any further questions from counselors on this topic? Make a motion to close the public hearing. I do have to first.
If I may first.
Certainly, Mr. Vauner.
If I may.
Go ahead.
If it is, if, I appreciate the high praise, and I will pass that along. However, if this is really in and already been placed, I intend to speak with people, let them know that this is not the way it's supposed to be done, and they know this. So I will take whatever Counselor Boishman has said into account and.
Much appreciated. So I do have to, I mean, I see there's no one here in the audience, but I do have to ask if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition. Seeing none, any in opposition to the petition? Seeing none, if all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is before the council.
Motion to approve, 14521.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 14521. Speaking on the motion, if there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have orders finance an FY21 budget order, which Counselor DiNatale has requested a suspension of the rules on. This is 14721, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within the fiscal year 2021 budget, the sum of $86, same to be transferred from Veterans expenses, travel and meetings, to Veterans personal services, longevity. Do I have a motion for suspension?
I make a motion for suspension.
I have multiple motions and seconds for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor DiNatale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
The matter is before the council.
Move to approve, 14721. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 14721.
On the motion?
On the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I am not, I wanted to verify, but the mayor is not here at this present time. I wanted to ask, I would vote for this as long as he tells me that he's going to work for, to get light duty inside the, inside the contracts. Light duty, that's going, so this way here, we can cut down the cost of workman's comp.
Counselor, this has to do with Veterans Services, and it's $86.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about $6,000. I'm sorry. Excuse me, I take that back.
Okay. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it passes. We have now FY22 budget orders, also requested to be a suspension of the rules. 14821, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within the sum of $6,000, same to be transferred from Facilities Personal Services Receptionist, and credited to City Clerk Personal Services Receptionist. 14921, order that there be and hereby is transferred from within the sum of $100,000, same to be transferred from Reserve for Other Municipal Purposes Capital Expenses, and credited to Law Other Expenses Litigation Special, Special Counsel. And 15021, ordered that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Technology Collaborative Community WiFi Hotspots Program grant in the approximate amount of $40,220 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support the deployment of two wireless access points to the internet.
Make a motion for suspension of the rules.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Sorella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor DiNatale.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Mr. President, I move that we move 148 separate from all the rest.
These are separate, these are separate items, they are not part of a report.
Move to approve, 14821.
I have a motion to, I have a motion and second to approve 14821. Speaking on the motion.
On the motion, this is the one I meant, I made a mistake, and I'm sorry about that, Counselors. I'm leery about voting, I know it's a small amount of money, $6,000, but I believe that the city should look into the fact that we should have implement light duty to help defray some of the cost of workman's comp. We pay about a half a million dollars in workman's comp if you add it all up. I think we can cut down on the cost of expenses. And the way I look at it, if somebody's injured, they can sit there and say, hey, Mr. Boishman, you go right over there, and that's where you pay your tax bill, and you go right over there, and that's where you pay your water bill, so.
Counselor, again, I know this is the intended item this time, but it still does not pertain to any of the departments that you have, you know, been discussing workman's comp on in the past.
Receptionist job.
This is, yes, this is.
And the receptionist job is for.
Counselor, the question before us is simply whether to allow this $6,000 to be applied to the current needs of the city clerk for a receptionist. We can discuss contractual issues when the contracts come up again, or when they're about to come up again.
They're coming up now. That's why I'm bringing it up.
When they're on our agenda, we can discuss them.
I mean, when they come in front of us, we won't be able to discuss them, because they're coming, they'll be coming in front of us, done. So, all right, go ahead. $26,000, but.
I have a motion and second to approve 14821. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it passes. 14921 is now before the council. I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion and second to approve 14921. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Green.
I only have one question, and it would probably be to the city solicitor, or I don't even know who can answer what now.
Well, if you'll give me a moment, Madam Clerk, who made the motion on that?
I believe that was Counselor Squallia.
Counselor Squallia, are you willing to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Is there unanimous consent for withdrawal of the motion?
And if I say no, what happens?
Then the city solicitor. Okay, seeing no objection, Counselor Green, you may ask your questions to the city solicitor.
Do we know from what department the capital expenses, from what department the capital expenses will decrease in order to increase the expense for the special counsel?
I would defer the question of where that money's coming from to the auditor.
Auditor Brooks, if you're willing, you may certainly approach the podium.
I am, am I allowed?
Go right ahead.
If you, I would refer to the letter from the mayor that was in the packet. This is coming from the Reserve for Capital Expenses, which is the reserve we build into the budget as part of our effort to raise the amount of debt service to pay for the Long Joe School and, I mean, sorry, the Crocker School and the library projects coming forward. Normally, we use this money for capital projects. It's the only money that's currently available to use, so the mayor's intention, according to his letter, is to use $100,000 to cover the request that the law department has, and then when free cash is certified, he would put $100,000 back into that line item.
Okay.
It's really, until free cash is certified, which I'm hopeful this year will be October, November, and we'll be able to replenish it right away.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Counselor Green, as you still have the floor, are you willing to allow Solicitor Prestori to make an official comment?
Yes, my God, whoever knew that I would have that power? Woo, yeah, hitting.
I want to thank the council for their confidence, and I saw that this lone order was, received the suspension of the rules, and looked to be sailing through, except for a thoughtful question from Counselor Green. And just to follow up, further answer your question, this is still within the reimbursable component of money with the FAA. So a portion of this will be reimbursed, the city as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Squallia.
Yes, just a question, this is directly related to petition 13621 from the Legislative Affairs Committee, yes?
Sorry, if you could please.
This is directly related to the Legislative Affairs Committee petition obtaining, obtaining the special counsel of Merrick, O'Donnell, DeMalle, and Bougie.
Actually, I can see the confusion, but this is related to a civil action that the city's currently defending, which is not a bankruptcy matter.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further comments on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, you withdrew your motion, would you like to renew your motion?
Renew motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve 14921. On the motion, seeing none, if there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it passes. 15021 is now before the council.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve 15021. Speaking on the motion, if there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, motion passes. That concludes our agenda items announcements. The city clerk would like to remind any voter who wishes to run for elected office that the deadline to return nomination paperwork is Tuesday, August 3, 2021, by 5:00 p.m. Contact the city clerk's office for further information. That concludes our agenda this evening. Counselor Boishman.
I only have one thing to say, if you don't mind. I wanted to ask the residents if they can clean off their catch basins if they're in front of the house. We had some flooding during this last rainstorm. I know we had every rain, but a lot of the catch basins that I went by were covered with dirt, leaves, and debris. And we only get so many employees, and I really believe that if we're going to be successful as a city, we all should chip in, and that's not a lot of work to clean off a catch basin and take the trash off and put in your rubbish barrel. I mean, you eliminate a lot of the problems, and the people down in the hill won't get flooded out and have damage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, and that would certainly be a very good and civic-minded thing for people to do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, I have a motion and second, if there is no objection, we are adjourned.